Petty with Mount Rose Missionary Baptist Church Pastor. There you are. Please come forward. Everyone, if you so choose, please stand with me and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we come first of all to tell you thank you for what you've done in a matter of weeks and months of you spad us through this season that we're going through of hurricane time. But not only that, Father, we thank you for who you are. You are the Almighty God. And Father, we come specifically for this level of your government on the city level. We ask, Lord, that you would help these constituents that have been called out masses from the group of people that represent the city. We ask, Lord, that you'll give them clarity of mind, give them a cohesive spirit that they carry on the affairs that affect this local city. Bless this meeting and bless them as only you can in the adventures in the days to come. As we look to close out this year, we need your grace and your mercy. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join in the pledge to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Petty.
Thank you, sir.
May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Ames, here. Mayor Proton Felshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Pate.
Here.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Muton.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate everyone coming today. We do have one proclamation that I'm pleased to read. We have actually three in one: ovarian cancer awareness month, breast cancer awareness month, and Gift of Life Program Day. Whereas September and October are national ovarian and breast cancer awareness months, and it is estimated this year that nearly 300,000 women will be diagnosed with either breast or ovarian cancer, and more than 56,000 women will die from these diseases in the United States. And whereas early detection is key to achieving the best possible outcome for a woman who is diagnosed with ovarian or breast cancer, and by learning about possible warning signs, women can increase the likelihood of detecting these cancers in their earliest stages. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has contributed to the increased unemployment and loss of health insurance for many Americans, which has dramatically escalated southeast Texans' need for Gift of Life services. And whereas Gift of Life has continued making available educational materials to thousands of individuals to advance overall health and life-saving breast cancer screenings and diagnostic tests for its nearly 2,220 medically underserved clients. Through Gift of Life efforts, Gift of Life's efforts, 24 women were diagnosed with breast cancer last year and an additional four women during the first two months of this year. Since inception, the organization has helped extend the lives of more than 250 women whose breast cancer was detected through its free critical services. And whereas to heighten awareness of these diseases, Gift of Life has encouraged the community to get in the pink and teal by hosting fundraising events that include neighborhood walks, social media opportunities, and pinkouts at schools, businesses, and churches. And the organization will host the Julie Richardson Proctor 10th anniversary Legacy Celebration on Saturday, October 31st, with an exciting Facebook watch party. And whereas Gift of Life also is recognizing extraordinary ambassadors for its cause, the following eight angels among us: Joanne Brown, Sherri Branick, Denise Plummer-Gothier, Jan Hayes, Debbie Minyard, Tracy Young, Bonnie Vessel, and Maureen Winchell. And whereas the Beaumont Police Department is advancing Gift of Life endeavors through its Pink Patrol Car Project, featuring active patrol car wrapped with the breast cancer ribbon hosted at various sponsor sites. And now therefore, Becky Ames, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2020 as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, this month of October 2020 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and October 27th, 2020 as Gift of Life Program Day in Beaumont, and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of cancer screenings and encourage the community to participate in breast and ovarian cancer awareness activities. Accordingly, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed signed today. And we're very pleased today to have Regina Rogers, Julie Rogers Gift of Life Program, founder and chair, along with the executive director, Norma Sampson, for the Gift of Life Program. Y'all, please come say hi. And feel free to say a few words. I do have this proclamation for you.
Where's Regina?
She's behind you.
Always behind you.
No, no.
This is the best cheerleader. Anna, would you like to come for somebody?
Sure, yes.
Anybody?
That would be nice.
Yes.
We didn't know protocol.
Well, you can just walk around and say hi.
Okay, this is not an indication of knowing that anyone sizes, but I've got directions. So we have our new shirts this year. It's all about living for love, and it's our heart, and it's from our heart to the community to say thank you for your support, thank you for saving lives in southeast Texas, and that we hope it underpins the level of kindness and civility and love that we wish for everyone in our community and across the nation. So we have shirts, and I'm gonna just leave them here.
Okay, that's fine.
And so if the shirt size is not right, just get some help.
We will. Thank you so much.
And let me say also Debbie Minyard, for those of you who...
I want to get up there because you want to talk in the mic.
You can take it off.
You can take it off.
Oh, okay. Oh, my God.
You can hear you're talking.
Oh, I got that COVID out of shape, and so I barely... Anyway, so Debbie Minyard is a wonderful local artist who has designed this heart. She has a heart business. That's basically what it is for her because her sister lost her battle with breast cancer. Perhaps some of you knew Dr. Collins. It was his sister, her sister Beverly Baker, and so she fought very courageously, but she succumbed to this disease at much too early of an age. And so Debbie's one of our angels among us, and her gift to us was to design this heart. So anyway, thank you for allowing us to be here. Officer Haley, who you know is part of our family and our team, because thanks to the City of Beaumont Police Department, we're bringing the Pink Patrol Car back. And so Officer Haley and her beautifully wrapped car are outside, and they're avail... Well, the car and Officer Haley are beautiful. Hillary Moore. Oh, I'm sorry. I should have said that. Anyway, so the car's available.
I'm here to do the correct...
This is the editor. So anyway, we're just excited that the police department is with us again as our partner for grassroots initiative to help us basically spread awareness. Because as you know from the proclamation, our program is local. We're dependent upon the sustainability of local individuals and businesses to support us. And so with COVID, like so many, we've had to kind of repurpose ourselves, and we did have two of our fundraisers that were postponed, one of which is our Color Run, which we always have like 4,000 to 5,000 people in downtown Beaumont, but next year. So in lieu of that, we are doing a Facebook Live event. So we're encouraging the community to be virtual with us and to share on Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00. Come like us on Facebook, share your comments, and we'll have friends and supporters that will be live and be giving us information and stats, as well as just saying thank you to those individuals that have been so supportive of our cause. And so this would have been our 10th year to have the Color Rush. And so as you said, Mayor, with Julie Richardson Proctor, she died of ovarian cancer, didn't know the symptoms, wasn't aware of the silent disease, and like so many women, they basically, it went undetected until latent diagnosis. And for ovarian cancer, that's usually a terrible prognosis. So we want to spread this awareness and the risks so that your loved ones, our friends, our sisters and daughters in the neighborhood, will be able to save their lives and know the risk, as well as raise funds for our program. We're still delivering the breast cancer screenings and diagnostic services that are paid for by the support of the community. Thank you. And so, I'm sorry, so Regina... They got other business. Oh, well, you're standing the whole time. So, okay, everybody got this. Tell your mammy, your mummy to get a mammogram. And we've got some back here in handouts. And, oh, Haley, can you say something, Officer, you want to say something about cops and kids as well?
I'll just say that this Saturday, the Pink Police Car will be at the virtual event and then also at the BPD Cops and Kids, which is from 3:00 to 6:00, and it's a drive-through trunk retreat. I know the Art Museum also has an event earlier in the day, so everyone can spend the whole weekend or the whole day Saturday down in downtown Beaumont. So...
Main Street?
Yes, ma'am. Right here on Main Street. It'll start right in front of the police department. You can go to the Beaumont Police Department's Facebook page, and if you want to sponsor the Pink Patrol Car, you can reach out to us there or reach out to the Gift of Life, and we'll get that set up.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being such treasured friends, all of you, and thank you for caring so much, particularly about the less fortunate, who, as we say, the four Ls, the least, the last, the lost, and the lonely, who need our help and who we want to make sure are taken care of and particularly during these trying times. We love you. We thank you for the support of the City of Beaumont. This community means everything to me. Love you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Regina. And Regina and Norma, if I may, I just want to say one thing that I always say, and as you said, this is a local organization. A lot of people think, because there are some national organizations for breast cancer prevention and education, that everyone has a Gift of Life and they don't. And we're so lucky and blessed in the City of Beaumont to have a Gift of Life, and we appreciate y'all so much. And everyone that contributes to you and volunteers for you, thank you very, very much. We love you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
And if you're here for the purpose of the proclamation and you need to leave, now's the time. But of course, y'all are always welcome to stay. I would like to read that at the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code Claim of Akilia Bell. Okay, now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today on scheduled agenda items on the consent agenda or scheduled agenda items four through six, now is the time to do so. Items number one through three have already been heard in a public hearing, so are not open for a comment. That's already happened. So right now, it's for the consent agenda or for items four through six. If you haven't already done so and you would like to speak on one of these items, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room and hand it to the city clerk right here in the front of the room. She will call out your name. We would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. If you're here to speak on any other item, I will open up the microphone at the end of our general business for that purpose. But right now, it's for items number four through six or the consent agenda. I don't have any, Mayor. Is there no one? Okay, there appears to be no one, so I'll close the floor. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda, please.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. There's a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Getz and Councilmember Neal.
Okay, I have a question about item number D, adopt a financial management policy for the City of Beaumont. I've looked at it. It seems to be, you know, good. I'm wondering, what did we have in place before and what prompted this?
Now, I'm speaking a little bit for Todd, so hopefully I don't go off the reservation on that. But basically, this document takes a number of policies that already exist, just combines them into a single document. The reason this came to pass is because Patrick Wiltshire with Public Management, who we've been working on for these grant submissions, recommended that we needed a financial management policy in a concise document to be able to point GLO to as part of these grant submissions. So that's why it's coming to you now.
Okay, great.
Councilmember Neal, did you have something? Or is that the same?
Same question.
All right, thank you. All right, are there any other discussion questions or comments on the consent agenda? If not, we do have a motion and a second on the floor for approval. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously, and I believe Mr. Boone, you're going to take us into item one. Go ahead, please. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Mayor and counsel, item number one is an ordinance entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a multifamily development and hotel in the CBD Central Business District for property located at 670 through 690 Orleans Street in the City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Richard Gilbert is requesting permission for a multifamily development and hotel at this location. At a joint public hearing held on October 19th, 2020, the planning commission recommended five to zero with one abstention to approve the request for the specific use permit with two conditions that are stated and outlined in your staff memorandum. The administration recommends approval with the stated conditions as well.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, you have heard the reading of item number one. Is there a motion on this item?
Some move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
This is exactly the type of project that we need to see happening downtown. It is private development coming in to do something downtown, to have more people staying downtown. I'm very enthusiastic about it. I've met Mr. Gilbert. I've seen the project. Mr. Boone, for the benefit of the public, could you describe a little bit about what type of incentives we have to people that want to come in and develop downtown as far as an empowerment zone, in case people don't know that?
Yes, sir. So within the downtown area, we have a couple of different incentives that are potentially available for development. One is the Neighborhood Empowerment Zone, which is a local incentive package which allows for city tax abatements, as well as fee waivers, as well as expedited permit review. We also allow, as part of that incentive package, lien waivers, so demolition or weed or litter abatement liens. And then secondly, a relatively new incentive is not a local or state, but a federal opportunity zone. Downtown Beaumont is designated as an opportunity zone. So that's a program that was recently developed. It's administered by the IRS, and it's similar to a tax credit application whereby real equity can be tapped into for development of a project within an opportunity zone.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is that all? Okay. Anything else, counsel? Okay, there's a motion and a second for approval on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously. Item number two, please.
Okay, item number two is an ordinance entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a bar in a GCND, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling District, for property located at 6165 Mula Creek Drive in the City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Let's see. At a joint public hearing held on October 19th, 2020, the planning commission recommended five to zero to approve the request for the specific use permit at this location. With the conditions that are stated in your staff report, the administration recommends approval with the same condition.
Thank you. Counsel, you have heard the reading of item number two. Is there a motion on this item?
Some move to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Is there any discussion or questions? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number three, please.
Item number three is an ordinance entitled an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow used car sales in an NC neighborhood commercial district for the property located at the southeast corner of Delaware Street and Briar Cliff Drive in the City of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. At a joint public hearing held on October 19th, 2020, the planning commission considered this item and recommended five to zero to deny the specific use permit. The administration recommends denial as well.
Thank you. Counsel, you've heard the reading of item number three. Is there a motion on this item?
Make a motion that we deny.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second for denial. Is there any discussion, questions?
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Boone, during the planning and zoning meeting, the staff's original recommendation was for approval. Can you explain why that was the case?
Certainly. So the property in question is zoned commercially, neighborhood commercial. The property in question is located on the major arterial street, Delaware. It is proximate to a multifamily development. It's proximate to a nursery. It is across the street from a shopping center. So with that being the case, there are limited uses that are allowed there. So we felt like with sufficient conditions, it might be a compatible use for that area.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes.
There were a number of residents that live on that street that voiced objection to having a used car lot put there in their neighborhood, and it triggered a provision in our charter that requires a supermajority. Could you explain what that actually means?
Yes, sir. So in order to approve a specific use permit or a rezoning, we send out, we the staff, send out notification letters to all property owners within 200 feet of subject property. And part of our process is to take feedback or responses, whether the owners within the 200 feet are for or against a proposal. When 20% of those owners or 20% of that acreage of that area of the property within that area are opposed to an item, the rezoning or specific use permit can be approved, but it has to have the approval of three-fourths or more of the city council in order to be approved.
So that would be six in this case?
In this case, yes, sir.
Okay, anything else, counsel? There is a motion and a second on the floor for denial. All in favor of denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. And I believe Mr. Barkoviat, you're going to lead us in the next three.
If I can get my mask off. Item number four is asking counsel to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, with the lower Naches Valley Authority related to their application to the Texas General Land Office for grant funding. The LMVA is going to submit an application to the GLO for the same Hurricane Harvey State Mitigation Competition Funds that we've submitted for our West End Treatment Plant and the two drainage projects. Their application is for a proposed 1,100-acre reservoir located in northwest Beaumont in close proximity to their two canals bringing water from the Naches River. The reservoir is intended to provide prolonged reliability of the surface water during a natural disaster. So since we're applying for that West End Water Treatment Plant, this is a natural, you know, joint benefit for both of us because we'll be a customer of LMVA, while LMVA with this reservoir will provide more resilience in the case that we can't pump water off of the river for a period of time after a disaster. So under this MOU, both parties agree to provide timely progress updates as the projects develop or change. There's no funding related to it. Administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Counsel, you have heard the reading of item number four. Is there a motion on this item?
Please feel free.
There's a motion on the floor for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion or questions? There appearing to be none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Number five, please.
Item number five is asking counsel to consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of four grapple trucks for Houston Solid Waste Division. The grapple trucks will be purchased from Grand Truck Center of San Antonio in the amount of $911,966.48. These units will replace models that have surpassed their useful life expectancy. The trucks are used for the collection of heavy trash. The existing units will be disposed of in accordance with city surplus property policies. Pricing was obtained through the Houston-Galveston Area Council, which meets procurement standards. Manufacturer's warranty is 12 months. The funding will be out of the solid waste fund. Administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Counsel, you have heard the reading of item number five. Is there a motion on this item?
Some move to approve.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion or questions? There appearing to be none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Number six, please.
Item number six is asking counsel to consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of two dump trucks for use in various operations. One Western Star 4,700 SB Dump Truck in the amount of $131,156.24 will be purchased for use in streets and drainage. This will replace 1997 Volvo Dump Truck, which has exceeded its life expectancy. That will be disposed of in accordance with the surplus equipment policy. The second truck, Western Star 4,700 SB Dump Truck, in the amount, same amount of $131,156.24, will be used in the Water Reclamation Division, replacing a 2004 International 7,600 Dump Truck, which will also be disposed of. The total includes an administrative fee of $1,000. Pricing was obtained through HGAC as well. Manufacturer's warranty is 12 months. The Capital Reserve Fund and Water Utilities Fund will be used for the purchase of the two trucks. Administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Counsel, you have heard the reading of item number six. Is there a motion on this item, please?
So moved.
There's a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? There appearing to be none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Barkoviat. Okay, that concludes our general business for today, so I will move right into public comment. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today, time to do so is now. If you haven't already done so, as I mentioned earlier, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room and hand it to the city clerk at the front of the room. She will call out your name. And also, we would appreciate if you would keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. Is there anyone that would like to speak today? Is there? No? Okay. All right. Did you, sir? Oh, no? Okay. There appears to be no one, so I'll move to council member comments, and I'll start with you, Councilmember Muton.
Thank you, Mayor. Would just like to remind everyone that daylight saving time will end this Saturday, so just remember to set your clocks back one hour. And also a reminder that the Gift of Life will have a Facebook Live event this Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00. So please check that out and support the Gift of Life, who support not only our city, but the entire Golden Triangle to save lives from breast cancer. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Samuel.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Pate.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, we were notified that our city manager, Kyle, had contacted COVID, and so we want to keep him in our prayers. It just shows you that, as we said before, no matter how conscientious you may be, that sometimes things can happen that you don't plan. Also, I'd like to say that Marie Broussard, who was really one of the sweetest people, that if you had the opportunity to know her, it'd be redundant for me to tell you that. Part of the Broussards family that's been here for, I think, five generations. Just wonderful people. Marie was really involved in so many things historically, no pun intended, here in Beaumont. And she, as many of you know, lost her son, Tom, to some of the things that we've been talking about as it relates to cancer and how important it is to continue to be on the lookout for that. And she just... And she just, she made a difference in Beaumont. And when we, when it's all said and done at the end, that's the question that we hope, we hear St. Peter and God say, "You did a good job." I could quote a biblical verse, but I'll just let it go at that. On a happier note, the Babe Didrikson Zaharias Museum and Vista Center is going to be open next Monday for its regular hours. For many of you that are aware, there was a lot of reasons that things slowed down quite a bit. But one of the major reason was that we've gone in and, and I say we, the Babe Zaharias Foundation, went in and renovated the museum. And for those of you that aren't as familiar with Babe Zaharias, I'll just ask you to Google it because we wanted to get out of here before 8:00 because I could tell you it'd take several hours. But it's going to open from 9:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, Monday through Saturday. It's closed on holidays. And one of the things I would like to reiterate is, and I'm sorry that Regina left, the Babe Zaharias Museum was the brainchild of Ben Rogers. And that museum was built with private funds on private property by individuals that contributed their personal funds. There were no grants at all. It was, like I said, funded by private funds. And in the late 80s, since Beaumont didn't have a Vista Center, and it's right there on the interstate, the foundation entered into an agreement with the city to use it as a Vista Center. And it has been since 1988. It's important for people to know that this foundation, unlike a whole lot of other foundations, was not funded by Babe's fortune. Matter of fact, we didn't get anything from Babe Zaharias Estate except the memorabilia, which we built that museum around. There isn't anybody on the foundation makes a dollar or a nickel. That was the way it was set up when Ben and my father pretty much went out and raised all this money over the years for the foundation. And one of the things that the foundation does, in addition to try to promote the legacy of the world's greatest female athlete, we've also endowed seven endowed scholarships for women athletes at Lamar. And many of them have gone on to greater heights. And many are in the Hall of Honor at Lamar University. We're glad that we can do it. I would encourage all of you to take the time to go visit and see how somebody who was born in 1911, before women could even vote, became the world's greatest woman athlete and still is. There isn't any question. I don't even know who number two is, and I like athletics. But if you get a chance, I'd encourage you to go visit again. Doesn't cost anything. It's free. And lastly, we're still early voting. If you haven't voted, I mean, I think Texas is already breaking records for early voting. And you can be a part of a record-breaking event by taking the time to get out and vote. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mayor. As councilman Pete just said, there's 62 million that have already voted. That is a record. And so as he encouraged you, let me encourage you to get out and vote. More people involved in the political process is a good thing. And so it's a good, it's good and exciting to see this happening right now. Also, Ford Park is bringing in For King &amp; Country this Friday night, October 30th, at 7:00 PM for a concert. You can go to fordpark.com and purchase your ticket. There will also be an interactive wall that you'll be able to sign to honor first responders, healthcare workers that are on the front line of fighting COVID-19. At 6:45, there are elected officials, city and county, that are being invited to come up first at 6:45 and to sign the wall. And so I encourage the mayor, city council members, and also there's county officials that are being invited to be there a few minutes early. Sign the wall, this interactive wall, supporting our first responders and our healthcare workers. So please go to fordpark.com, pick up your ticket for this concert, For King &amp; Country. It'd be a great night for a drive-in concert. Be a great night for you and your family. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Council member Neal.
No comment, Mayor.
Council member Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to join council member Pete in expressing our condolences to the Broussard family. Marie Broussard was a jewel and did make a difference. She will be missed greatly. On a happier note, I want to compliment the Symphony of Southeast Texas for an incredible live performance at the Beaumont Civic Center this past weekend. I know council member Neal was able to go. I don't know if anybody else on council was able to attend, but their performance was incredible, not only because of the musicians, but because of the acrobats and very talented troupe that they brought in. Kind of a Cirque du Soul type of performance with people on the silks and juggling and hula-hooping and all of this kind of thing coordinated with the music in a Halloween theme. Lot of songs were very well-known and appreciated by the audience. There was social distancing, and you can do that in the Civic Center pretty easily. People were spread out and it was a tremendous event. And from the response of the citizens that were there, you can tell that people are ready to get their lives back to normal. We're going to continue to have to deal with COVID. The numbers are, you know, not diminishing as quickly as we would like, but, you know, life goes on and, you know, we will persevere. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Just a couple of things. First of all, since you gave me a segue into COVID-19, as you said, you know, our numbers are not declining as rapidly as we'd like. But fortunately for us thus far, we are not in a difficult situation. Hopefully won't be with our hospitals, as we're hearing about some across the state. I heard El Paso had like 1,200 cases in one day. So they're going to be very, very stressed in their hospital system. And the whole idea here is to make sure that doesn't happen. And so far, we're, I mean, it's not empty, obviously, but we're doing pretty good. And when I look at the numbers each day, I try, I always hope that the positive numbers are at least the same as or less than the recovered numbers. In a few days, that hasn't happened, but for the most part, it has. And still deaths happening, unfortunately. God bless them. But it is people, for the most part, with underlying health conditions. With that said, we have some very talented youth in our city. And I was invited, I used to go to classrooms all the time before COVID-19. And part of, that's one part of my job as mayor that I really did enjoy, especially with the young children, since I don't have any. I had to learn how to deal with that, but they are very rowdy and you ought to be on a Zoom call with about 30 of them. Second graders, Ms. Glenda McCray's class at Amelia. And they wrote a poem. And I asked them to send it to me because I wanted to share it because I thought they did a really good job. And so a shout out to the second grade class at Amelia, Ms. Glenda McCray's class. And they did all talk at once on Zoom, so that was a little, it was tough, but they are, they were so excited. And so this, I'm going to read this poem that they wrote. I think they sang it. Not going to sing it. Don't want y'all to leave. "Pandemic cure, da-da-da-da-da-da. Pandemic cure, da-da-da-da-da-da." "COVID-19 isn't here to stay. If you will follow instructions, it will go away. Wash your hands until they're clean. The germs will disappear and never be seen. Wear your mask and wear your shield. Cover your mouth. This virus is for real. COVID-19 can be knocked out. Stay at home and don't go out. Social distancing means standing apart, so give air hugs. Give air hearts. Stand far apart and use your eyes. Follow these steps. You will survive. Pandemic cure, da-da-da-da-da-da. Pandemic cure, da-da-da-da-da-da." COVID-10, it's COVID-19, isn't here to stay. If you follow these instructions, it will go away. Hats off to the second grade class of Amelia. And for Ms. McCray for encouraging the students to write a poem. And they all had their masks on and they were having a great time. And the class was full, so that was great to see. The, also, I just wanted to mention, and I wanted, I was going to wait, but Tyron Cooper, our city attorney, is not here today. However, I'm sure that y'all might have seen in the press that he was voted the IMLA, which is International Municipal Lawyers Association President for October of 2020 to October of 2021. So congratulations to Mr. Cooper. This is an international association of council and very, very proud for him. And I'll mention it again when he returns. So that concludes our meeting today and my comments. So we appreciate y'all coming. Please be safe and have a great day. We will now recess into executive session.